Oh, we need to order.
I'm in this space.
The first point on the agenda is questions and comments from the floor?
None.
Okay, the next is reports. And before we ask Alice to give the final student report, I would like to say on behalf of the board that we are so grateful that you've been here this year. And your enthusiasm and initiatives that you've taken have just added an all other aspect. Because one of the problems that we have especially is that we don't have our edge in the ground at school. You do, and you did. And that made a huge difference for us in having a feeling for what's going on and what students are thinking. So I want to thank you, and I want to give you a card with a small gift on behalf of the board that everyone signed and made their own little comments.
Thank you.
And I'll take a hug.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys too. You know, I learned a lot being here, and it's made me feel really great by feeling like I could be a resource to the students here. Feeling like I've made a difference this year and being able to do everyone here justice. Yeah, I really enjoyed it. I've learned a lot about the inner workings of the school, about budgeting. But I've really enjoyed all of my time here. It's something I'll take with me, for sure.
As your question, what are you going to be doing once you graduate?
Uh, I'm going to college for communications. So obviously, having this on my resume and also just having this experience is going to really help me in my field.
Cool.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anyway, prom and post-prom. So we had our prom held on May 20th at the Rustic Ties Venue in Dodgeville. The weather was very nice that day, so students were able to gather outside of Arkell's for pictures. There was also a photo booth at the venue that we rented, and that was a big hit. Students really loved taking pictures. And they had props that the photo booth came with. So there were lots of pictures, fun pictures, that people got to take. After our prom, at least 150 people attended our post-prom. Students were able to participate in many events. We had a game of Price's Rate in the great room, an electronic bowl in the gym, a belly flop contest, a slip inside. And well, we always have the prize raffle at the end of the night, which encourages people to stick it through. Students came together at around 2:00 in the middle school gathering space, and they heard from a hypnosis. He shared some of his theories about consciousness and the benefits of hypnotherapy, which is his typical practice. He had about 10 students join him up in the front, where they sat and became hypnotized. Took them about seven minutes and kind of just a process of having them ground themselves within their body, like become hyper-aware of their senses, which sent them into this hypnotic trance, I suppose. So once they were in that trance, he could like get them to stand up and act out these same scenarios. Some of the students said that it felt very real. Other students said that they were faking it. But those who did think it was real said they came out of it feeling very relaxed and confident. It was really great entertainment for those who weren't participating. And overall, post-prom and prom were very enjoyable for most. And the dedication that SAD, the prom committee, and the junior and senior class officers and advisors put into this event was very obvious. So for the first time, completing 12 hours of community service and attending a board meeting has been a requirement for seniors to graduate. I spoke with a few seniors about what they did in order to complete this requirement outside of just going to the board meeting and what they thought about the process. Many felt that it was an inconvenience to their year, but they did value the work that they did. The students who I've spoken to, because this has been cumulative, like talking to people about their volunteer experiences, so I can tell you a bit each board meeting about what students have done. As I've been talking to them, the most impactful events have always been the ones where students can see the direct effect of their actions, such as the prom event that I told you about previously that was held at Leaning Cobles School that a few students attended. And then the fill the bus event is always very, very good for students to be a part of, because it's right around the holidays. And they can see the people that they're giving the food to and be a big part of it. And it's cumulative events. Oh, you know, they bring the food, and then they're dropping it off. And they're seeing people be really touched by what they're doing. And so those who actually completed their volunteer hours are happy with themselves and happy with what they've done. They did still feel worried for those few students who have not completed their hours. You know, since it's a small grade, we talk and we know who has not. And we know that it is students who have generally struggled just to complete their high school years, just to not drop out and to pass all their classes. So to be that close to graduating and then possibly not be able to because of this new standard that they have to meet is frustrating for us to see. But I think people also understand that it is just something you have to complete. And then if you think about it, 12 hours really isn't too much time. But they also felt that, say, this requirement had started and been presented to them earlier on in their high school career, say sophomore year, it would have given those students who are now struggling to meet the requirement more time to do it, to stretch it out. As I say, don't procrastinate. And it would also give them the chance to let these volunteer hours show on their college transcript. Because by November, you may have four or five hours done. And then you have your college transcript in, and then you're completing these other volunteer hours that you can't show for. And for many students, this is the first time that they're really putting in volunteer work in it. It might have helped their transcript. But otherwise, I think it was, me personally, I think it was successful this year. I think people did value it. I think teachers did a really great job. And the school administration did a really great job of providing people with opportunities and pushing them to make sure that they got their hours done. And so I would like to introduce you guys to our new board rep and the new class president, class advisors, or not class, the new officers for the senior class. So we had the election yesterday. And the new president is Gianna Memmer. The vice president is McKenna Higgins. Treasurer is Keonah Pete. And secretary is Tori Blakeslee. And in for the Board of Education student representative position, we had three people running, Eliza Hopkins, Robert Moore, and Dawson Sweet. Robert Moore ended up becoming, being voted into my position. And I'm really pleased with that because I got to know him through debate club and our politics class. And he shows a lot of dedication to the work he puts into that. So if he puts anywhere near as much research and time into the preparation for the debates we do, I think that he will do very well with the reports and talking to students and the care that he demonstrates in these situations that I'm in with him where we're talking about topics. You know, I can see that he really cares about people and the effect that things have on others. So I think he'll be really great for this position. And I think that he'll bring a lot of care into what he does. And he'll be very good at drafting the reports and staying on top of things and being informed. So I'm very excited for you all.
Okay. Any questions? I just have one. How is it determined what your civic engagement will be? You're volunteering. How does it decide? How do you decide what are you going to do for that prom?
So we have a website that we go on, that the school set up. It's called X2 Ball. So you get on and you create an account in one of your history classes at the beginning of the year. And it, you know, obviously, people can do their own independent volunteer thing. So if they have something else that isn't... Well, I'll explain what X2 Ball is first. But so Ms. Evans and some people down in the counseling office communicate with local places and ask if they need volunteers. So a constant one that we always had volunteers going to were Little League baseball for us, like working at the concession stand, where we were, they seemed to be in constant communication with ASO's field, so rapping a soccer game or painting the lines. So you go on, and then you had these lists of opportunities. And then you can say, I want to sign up for this. And then you sign up for it, you go to it. And then the person who is in charge gets a notification from X2 Ball because you put their email in, their phone number in, and they verify your hours. You write a report about what you did, just something small, what you took away from it. And then Ms. Evans verifies it. And then you have, say, three hours for doing an activity. And then if you're doing something... I know that we had a student who was doing a lot of work, volunteer work in Syracuse. So it wasn't something set up by the school, but she was able to do the volunteer work, put in the number of the person who was overseeing it. And then the person, like the other people who are doing more local things, they verify it. And then it goes to Ms. Evans, and she verifies it. Then everyone gets their hours. So it's orderly, and it's easy to do. And the teachers are really great at reminding us to check this website, to see what is available to us, and to stay on top of our hours and to make sure that we are trying to pace ourselves in order to get it all done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, well, while we're on people for whom this is the last meeting, I would like to just say how much we appreciate it having Jen Field on the school board.
Yay.
You have really valued your thoughtful and thorough vetting of issues that we had to face and deal with. And you've just been a very dedicated and constant member. And I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, no tears. Okay, the next point on the agenda is the superintendent update.
Yes, to first take a shout out. Glad to have you here. And Ally, phenomenal job again with the concert series. Three events, three nights. And they were all a little different, which was pretty neat. And Mr. DiPaolo actually got up and was one of the performers.
That was impressive, yeah.
Nice having a circus clown.
Send you the video now. Nick Anker came up with just an amazing array of... It was phenomenal. And then last night was, you know, your constant, you know, your middle school and high school band and chorus. Just amazing. It's really amazing. It was hard to finish. And the amount of people, and you asked, were you there three nights? It was quite a bit, which is pretty neat, too. So we're offering this a great opportunity for our community members to come watch something, which is free. So kudos to everybody there again. It's always great to see you have this a great music department. Social Studies Department was chosen to present again at the national conference. Remember, a couple of years ago, they went. They were asked again to speak. I'll get some more detail and information as we come. But another great opportunity for our district to kind of show out there on a national level. So excited about that. We are kicking off our new website July 7. Remember, we talked about moving over to AtTheG. And our app and our website. We'll send you some copies of what it looks like over the next week or so. Starting some reminders out to people on Parent Square saying we're going to roll that over. And again, the great thing with this is it allows us to push everything out in one shot. It goes on our website, it goes on our app, it goes on Instagram, it goes on Facebook, all in one shot, as opposed to going to three or four different platforms. Very interactive, and the app, the same thing. We're going to roll all of our communications to Parent Square, meaning that the emails won't be on the app or on the website because we filtered everybody down to Parent Square for the most part. Another district that did this found that their people breaking into the system was a lot less because they couldn't kind of find the emails. You know, you go to another site, get the emails, pull them down. So Southland Ball is on that, it's your last year. And it worked out great when they pulled the emails from the website. Not saying that you can't email the teachers straight out, that's not good. But you're not going to be able to find them on the site. So I'm kind of very excited. We've done a lot of work over the last couple of months. With AtTheG, the case specialist has rolled everything over, so it'll be an easy transition. And we'll pick it off July 7th, so very excited about that. We have an array of things coming up next week and the week after. So as we put out the weekly or bi-weekly reminders, just take a look at the list of events. Next week, we have Athletic Awards Night. We have CT Graduation Night. We have the Retirement Party. We have the Awards Night for High School. And then the week after is all graduations, every night, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So a great time to celebrate all the successes for the year coming up. It's been a fast year, a really fast year. Looked up, it was March, and March went through pretty quick. And it's been fast. So closing up quick in the next couple of weeks will be very, very busy, put it that way. Besides that, everything else is on par to finish up this year. The high school has three days left before emergency. So it's not fast. All set?
Okay, thank you. Okay, next report is Policy Committee.
So we have six policies. A policy committee went over last month because I can't get on the system and just kind of...
Yep.
So a combination of things. These all come from NISBA. Remember, we've gone from Erie Policies to NISBA with our policies. And we're rolling over some of those. And some of them are just old, meaning, you know, over 10 years old, but they just haven't been updated. So our first policy on there is 5660. And it has to do with school safety plans. And the only addition to that was, if you see it highlighted, it says include emergencies instruction plan. That's the only addition to that. Because New York State is now in your safety plan and said you have to identify remote destruction, you know, from COVID. So we had to put that line in there. So that's it pretty much for that one.
I just want to say that one of the things that, I don't think it has to be in the policy, but reading through it, it lists incidents that have occurred in school of different types during the year. And while I don't think we need to hear details or anything like that, I would love for the board on a yearly basis just to get a summary of the different types of incidents that we've experienced in the last year, just to kind of get a sense of, you know, what is going on in that nature.
Incidents meaning?
What it describes here. How you got that? Am I looking at the wrong one? What's this? Which one is this?
2660.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. 7545.
Okay.
My bad.
Next, 7545.
Yeah.
This one, school safety and educational climate reporting. This used to be what's called BATER, remember that? They just switched it over to school safety, and it's called SSEC reporting now. The policy just has to say that we are obligated to report, which we aren't, but New York State rule, at the end of the year, we have to report any issues that might occur, like weapons on school grounds.
Bullying, harassment.
Yes. Suspensions with the violent SSEC codes, which would be fighting weapons, use of drugs, things of that nature. So that report prints out every year for us from the school tool because it takes all of our data from our referral system and kicks out the report. Usually very minimal. We can attach a report each year if we have to. Yep.
Not above the right policy?
Yes. And there's different levels of harassment and bullying in terms of, I want to say different levels. Bullying and definition, you know, is a repeated act, an empowerment on someone. It's a one-time case. It doesn't go down as bullying. It's a one-time situation. So the definition is very clear to that. So when you go see, might see four cases of bullying is because that's pretty much what we, you know, confirm for the year in terms of something that's going on repeatedly through the year.
You said bullying is defined as pattern.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So not just, like you said, you have one time.
Right, right.
And I think some people have a misconception of that. The New York State has defined it, you know. And that's the way we have to report.
Well, it's like one time with different people, though. What, it's the same person bullying, but just four different people?
That would qualify.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So a pattern, there's your pattern, yep. So that's, it's a new policy, but that's just a policy because we have to say that we have to report. It's kind of odd because of New York State law, we have to report. So 7619 is an updated policy, use of timeout rooms and physical restraints. This was just updated by New York State completely, and our policy was 10 years old. So this was just, since again, we've had Erie Bosse's policy, they came out with a grand new one. So we just replaced it with this new one, updated through NISBA.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Do we use timeout rooms, and how effective?
We have a timeout room space. We have not utilized it this year based on the students within our classroom. So it hasn't been necessary this year. It's not, it's really to keep the individual and the staff safe. It's not the most useful tool. You really need to use a lot of other interventions. But in a, you know, in an emergency situation, it's usable. But there's a lot of rules that go with it and how you utilize it and notify people prior, after, and steps that you have to take. So the policy honestly is just catching up with what special ed is already doing, so.
I'm very happy to hear that we haven't had to use it.
No, not because you're...
That's great.
Yeah.
The next policy is an update to IEPs in terms of what the students and parents rights. So that was updated in the bottom part on page three. Again, that was from NISBA to make sure you had it in the policy. So we added that piece to the policy.
And a question, is there anything new about how we approach IEPs based on this?
We've been, we stay up with all the New York State rules and regulations. So really, again, the policy for the district is just catching up to what we've already been doing.
8450 is homebound instruction. And the only addition there is they moved hours. And it used to be in primary grade levels, you had to give an hour a day for a student who was homebound instruction. Now it's two hours. And the secondary level was two hours, now it's three hours a day. And while someone sitting here who does it for us understands how difficult it is to get that many hours in, you know, there's also built in there to do the best that you possibly can. Meaning, you know, you might not be able to get three hours a day, but that's your plan to do all the time. So that's just the change here, as you can see. And then the last one was online learning course credit. Same thing as we did with the policy previous was the district has its emergency remote instruction plan if it's closer to two or more days to use. We have to close down because of a water main break. We don't have to move to our remote instruction plan per se. But if it's two or more days, they'd like to see us move to their remote instruction plan. Makes sense? And so very basic on four of them and two that are kind of brand new. Any questions? And they send us, as told by Mark, they send us rounds of policy updates, three times a year for the most part. So as we get to the next round, we'll break most in one time. This is kind of our first reading. If you have any questions next meeting, we'll approve them. So if you have any questions over the next month, let me know.
Okay. Any other questions right now? We'll move on to approvals. First, we'll have to do the minutes from the May 25 meeting because Patty wasn't there. So any questions about those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Wait a second. On favor?
All right.
Thank you. Any?
Abstention.
Abstention, thank you. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion for consent agenda for DPT.
Motion.
Second.
On the paper?
Right.
Okay. So we start going down the list. Minutes, May 4, they fit there. Sorry, they're May 4. Budget transfer schedule. Treasurer's report. Distributed interest on extracurricular accounts. I just had a question, how much is involved? I don't imagine it's much.
I don't know. I don't know.
It's petty, right?
It's probably $10.
It's just kind of a humorous question.
I know.
You brought it up. It was five.
I can't say the details.
Quick, quick, the organization meeting. Is that good to have a run? Okay. Okay, the center agreement, any questions there?
Let's just start on what I've been in a sound truck.
Upstate cerebral housing, any questions?
Continuation. I forgot about M and A.
I looked through the agreement, and there's no one to tell on it.
It's a state, it's a state. State provides, so it's a standard fee through the state. So I would have to look up what that is. It's given the state sets the...
So we don't, you don't get to agree with it, it's just, this is it.
This is what you're going to say. Yeah.
Okay, normally I work with...
I get it, yep, yep.
Okay. Contract services, industrial utilize services. Is that urinary infection services?
I also thought that, but that's...
What is yours?
It's our unemployment at Conover.
Any questions? All right. St. Anne Institute, any differences there?
No, continue.
Okay, same question for Northeast Merit?
Same.
Agreement for OT services?
Our, this is for CPSE. We had another provider, Renee Moser, who, starting in the fall, will no longer be available to provide OT evaluations for us. We had a full-time job at one agency. Then Ally, who works through, who's at OT, will be independent for us to provide those evaluations.
Except for legal services. And the...
No, the RFP sent it out, but there's only a couple minutes on the back. And I'm just happy with that.
Transportation business? I have a question on that. Is a price difference, it's $3.15 in the summer per day at $6.30 in the school year. Why?
Because there's reduced in services during the summer because summer, you are not, you are just maintaining. You're not gaining skills. That's how they look at it in terms of IEP world. The purpose of summer and extended school year is just to continue.
There's also two students.
Oh, and I'm sorry, and there's two students, yes. I was thinking about a different contract with OT, but this is transportation. So I have two students that'll be going to that spot. Yeah, I apologize.
Oh, so that's, during the school year, there would be two?
Yep, and during the summer, we're continuing with one, that students in CP, the second student's in CPSE, so they will not be going until next year. Yep.
Yeah, we don't have that. Except for transportation is...
You don't have R?
It's out of order.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's...
It's hand.
This is written in order.
There it goes?
Yep.
Yeah, four dots must be on the line, but I can't get it. This is R, and yours is K.
Yeah, four jobs mostly, I can't get it. This is R, and yours is C. Yeah, something's...
Okay, and then, uh, S is salary increases, uh, it could be four percent for all non-revenue employees, which would include you all, I would assume.
No, they have their own contract.
No, I'm just kidding.
Well, I mean, we'll take it, agree.
I'll take it. Deal.
Any questions there? Okay, and finally surplus items. Lot of music stuff?
Yeah, bucks.
No tears on that one, okay? All right, so, um, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda?
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Going on to personnel, um, unless anyone has an objection, I entertain a motion to call consent agenda personnel. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, um, so we'll just go down, summer starts, teachers. You wanna take a look at each particular?
Pretty much, Sam wants this one going.
Summer aides, food service, summer transportation. Just stop, you... Weirs, summer cleaner, department chairpersons, have you changes here?
No, under that. We can talk after a second. All laying out big time.
That's my last one.
Um, advisors, athletic coordinator, point teachers on special assignment.
Is there a residence?
I have a question, um, where it's stated, it's, um, special assignment for the school year, I thought it was just gonna be for one semester?
No, school year.
It's the whole year?
Yeah. I'm budgeted for the whole year.
I, I thought it was gonna be two, and then two.
No, it's because we couldn't quite, we couldn't do enough in six months, or five months, to really ingrain somebody, and to go onto the internships and to bring it back and then present, and, uh, work with kids and work with teachers, so.
How many do they apply?
Four. Well, very good, too, very good pool, different, um, uh, all four were different, which is fantastic, and all are very passionate for what they want us to do. So, really excited to see both people, you know, wanna be a part of it.
Where are they going?
Um, we're gonna be meeting with the Chamber of Commerce over the summer, uh, to work out the internships. Mostly local, because those will start building, prison gaps, building relationships, excuse me, with our students once when we do our internships. And then if, you know, we ever sort of do it, you know, another year, when we reevaluate, and, um, the other two would be a good fit to do in the future.
Okay, um, any other questions on that? Hey, uh, for the athletic coordinator, nothing to compare, uh, teachers on special assignment. Temporary, uh, temporary aide?
That's just the R of the funds, yep.
Temporary IS, that's the same.
Yep.
Special ed teacher, middle school.
But there was, uh, one who resignation, because there's another guy that job in, in, you know, Binghamton, so she's going with him. And right now, our, our math teacher at middle school has moved over to special ed, special ed certified in math.
Okay, and, uh, say to the high school?
That's a brand new hire.
Brand new hire, that's the new position?
Congratulations.
Yay!
Very tough position to get, to get.
Uh, point need replacement? Temporary school counselor?
Continue. Continue with Jack.
Okay.
Doing great.
Um, appointment energy manager, that's the second year of the, uh...
Yeah, it was a grant, remember, we got the extra hundred thousand dollars, so, uh, we had figured out how much that would extend it to, and extended to June tenth for us, two thousand point five, it's good.
And there's this other thing, is contract extension for somebody, Fitzgerald?
You might wanna keep him around, I don't know.
Any questions, Jen? Okay, and substitute cleaner? Only the extended cut, this chair?
Yes, you get the substitute one. I'm the substitute one.
That's part of the extended.
Ending your role.
It's part of the extension.
Keeping you grounded.
I would entertain a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Who?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, new business, draft meeting dates. Any, uh, I mean, this could change, but at this point, any issues with the, with the proposed agenda?
I'm just gonna put it out there, just because I happen to know that Good Friday is March twenty-ninth, and March twenty-eighth is when we have a meeting.
I'm gonna miss your job.
I know. I'm just saying that that might be a problem, that you might wanna move it now before you set a new song. I'm not...
And we've historically done it, wanna just move it now?
Sure.
Okay, we have a week, or people have a Tuesday?
We just do one day.
One day.
Which is Wednesday.
Wednesday's good?
The day before.
Yeah.
So we got plenty enough time.
Okay, so March twenty-seventh, the information. Any other questions about any of the dates? Okay, um, and, uh, we'll finish the board retreat.
Yep. Who's at the pick a date? Lori said the Tuesdays and Wednesdays are good for her during July, and this last year, we did it, um, let's see. We did it, everybody's okay with July nineteenth? And say that mess is up good, because we have our three-day retreat at admin, so we'll have, uh, all of our planning stuff done for the school year, so we can shut that out.
That's true. You said that's two teams, but that's...
What time?
Two with like a nighttime?
Seven or six?
Six, I believe.
Is it a little early?
Or five, yeah, really.
Right, you're good. You need to try the five?
Uh, nine feet tall, or the, the down.
Of the land?
Okay.
What?
A bike, a bike ride around, I'll just fill you.
What about the following week, twenty-fifth?
Have you done, Clinton?
Twenty-second or twenty-third?
Twenty-fifth? Sound good?
We're doing eight o'clock, and a place to eat tonight. That's a Tuesday?
Yes.
And I think that all we should do is be thinking about the issues that we'd like to be discussing at that retreat, and what to come up with in general for tonight's meeting. Okay? Okay, then, uh, move on to all business. I mentioned at the last meeting about the USBA Leadership in Education event. Um, it's on July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth in Albany. Um, I know Lori's already said that she signed up for it. Um, and I, I have to apply for it, and I'll pass it around, and I just look at it, and it's something... It's, it's something that would be interesting, and it looks like a really, um, pertinent and meaningful agenda. And I'd like to go, and, uh, as I said, Lori, Lori is in the data, she's going. Um, and who else would like to go, that would be good as well. Do you, let me just ask, does everyone of these, these finish this stuff? So you guys are down?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure that I... So if you, if you do wanna go, please let Andrea know, and, uh, so she can sign you up, and, and then we can kind of coordinate, uh, travel and all, July, and, uh, we'll get ready for July night. Uh, do you need an executive session?
Quickly, quickly.
I'd like a motion to move into a chat.
Motion.
All in favor? That's a wonderful evening, you can leave now.
Back.
Okay, good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.